Chair Kavanaugh.
Here.
Vice Chair Taylor.
Here.
Commissioner Toops.
Here.
Commissioner Kaufman.
Here.
Commissioner Claren is noted absent.
Amy, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? All right, welcome, everybody. Now is the time in our agenda where we can have public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to give public comment on items that are not on tonight's agenda. If you have a comment, please step up to the podium. State your name for the record. You're limited to three minutes. When you're done, please fill out a comment card and hand it to Kaylee, who's over there in the green. Thank you.
Is this on? Yep, I can tell. Okay, well, thank you. Hi, my name is Julie Arsenault. I am a resident and a homeowner in Coldstream. I'm here to speak about the navigation and emergency homeless shelter that's proposed at 12315 Deerfield Drive. I did submit public comment online earlier today, and I know that you've seen it. I appreciate the acknowledgement that I received on that. I figured that I would, since I had the opportunity to be here in person, I figured that I would also come here in person and can add a little bit of color to sort of my experiences and learning about this project and figuring out how to participate in the process over the past sort of 10 days or so. Not sure if there's actually a specific agenda meeting or agenda item for this project on tonight's agenda. But yeah, we kind of, as homeowners, we did some digging once we heard about this project. We found the Action Committees' on deck and meeting notes from their October 8th meeting, and it did mention this time slot, so here we are. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to come here and be heard. Yeah, I think the, you know, the past few days have been a little bit bewildering for us as we've kind of rushed to try to catch up on what's happening here. You know, we first kind of, a few of us first saw the article in the Sierra Sun. We weren't really sure exactly what the timeline was or when things were happening, but we kind of started like kind of talking about it and paying attention. And then, of course, Shawna came to my door at least, and I think maybe to others in the community, but I know specifically mine. You know, she kind of shared a little bit more about what was happening about the project, but, you know, kind of asked her for some information about the, just kind of questions about like what was going to be done to kind of... I think that, and I want to be clear, like I think this could be really positive for our neighborhood. We do already have impacts from unhoused people in our area. And so I do think there's an opportunity for this to be positive, but also as residents, you know, we do have questions and concerns and, you know, kind of wasn't able, we weren't able to kind of get those questions answered right away, just kind of basic questions about what was going to be done to ensure, you know, safety, cleanliness, things like that. What are some of the impacts that we should expect and how might we be planning for that? There's a number of other, you know, questions that residents have. And so I think, you know, I think I heard that there was going to be a follow-up meeting. I sent an email to Shawna right after to let her know that I was interested in, you know, attending that and to get a follow-up, and I didn't receive that until today. So I think over the weekend, we were kind of scrambling, trying to figure out what was going on. You know, I think obviously we're all concerned or we, or we want to participate in the process. We want an opportunity to partner with the town of Truckee here, the Homeless Committee, Nevada County, the Action Committee. Right, we want the ability to partner and create a good solution because I think a number of us are supportive of various initiatives to address the housing crisis here in Truckee. And so, yeah, that's basically just what I wanted to share. So I think you have the summary from all the other residents and appreciate the time.
Anyone else? If there is no further public comment, I'm going to close general public comment and move on to Agenda Item 5, Approval of Minutes from Past Meetings. The first one is June 17th, 2025. All of us were there. Are there any edits to it? Is there a motion to approve these?
A motion to approve. Second.
Chair Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Vice Chair Taylor.
Yes.
Commissioner Toops.
Yes.
Commissioner Kaufman.
Yes.
Approved. Moving on to the July 15th draft minutes. Once again, all of us were there. We can all vote. Does anybody have any edits? I do not have any. Would anyone like to move to accept this minutes?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Chair Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Vice Chair Taylor.
Yes.
Commissioner Toops.
Yes.
Commissioner Kaufman.
Motion passed. Oh, sorry. You looked like you were saying yes. Okay. July 29th draft minutes. I cannot vote on this one, but does anybody else have edits?
Motion to approve. I'll second.
Vice Chair Taylor.
Yes.
Commissioner Toops.
Yes.
Commissioner Kaufman.
Yes.
Motion passed. Thank you. Moving on to Item 6, Final Review Item, The Village at Gray's Crossing Project Amendment Time Extension. Is there an applicant presentation? And I guess clarifying questions for the applicant is moot. Your mic is not on, Yumi. I'm sorry, so I didn't hear what you said. Are they, were you expecting them?
They are here, but they're not here to give a presentation. It'll just be a staff presentation today. But they are, they can take questions if you have any. So we'll start the presentation.
Let's do a staff presentation, and then we can do joint questions after that.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. So this is the Village at Gray's Crossing Project Amendment Time Extension. To give you an idea, this project has been before you a few times. We're here to talk about the Village at Gray's Crossing, which is within the Gray's Crossing specific plan area, which is between the Prosser Dam Road and Hennessy Road roundabouts east of the 89, of 89 North. And just to give you a quick background on this iteration of the project, it was approved in 2019, which included 83,000 square foot, 129-room hotel with 5,000 square foot conference center, three commercial buildings with five residential units above, two commercial buildings with three residential units above, so 21 residential lofts and five commercial buildings or mixed-use buildings, a residential fourplex and a 24, and 24 attached single-family residential units. An eight-pump gas station was also proposed originally, but was removed from that, from consideration by the applicant at the hearing. So that's not currently part of the project. Two two-year time extensions were approved in 2021 and 2023 that approved this project again. In 2024, the applicants came forward with amendments to the Hotel and Conference Center, primarily looking at modifications to the architecture and the site. It still maintained the 129 units, increased the size of the hotel a little bit to 92,000 square feet, but the overall project amendment amended the whole project, including all of the single-family or attached single-family homes, the five mixed-use units, and extended that entire project to January 2026. Additionally, in that same year, a car wash was also considered by the Town Council on appeal. That was a 3,800-square-foot, 100-foot automated car wash. And that was also considered a project amendment to the entire Village at Gray's Crossing, and that extended the approval of the whole project to March 2026. So at this point, the project is approved until March 2026. Today, the applicant, it's a fairly large project, so the applicants are requesting a two-year time extension to finish out the project, which includes the townhomes. 12 of the 24 are left to be built, the five mixed-use buildings, the hotel and conference center, and the car wash. And the fourplex, as well as the 12 townhomes, have been completed at this time. So if action is taken tonight, the commission would be extending the land use entitlements for the development permits for all the structures and the site disturbance, a tentative map for the condominiumization of the 21 residential lofts, and a comprehensive sign program. The Planning Commission's role is to consider if the applicants have made a good faith effort to exercise the permits and ensure consistency with any changes to the General Plan, Specific Plan, and Development Code. The findings to make this extension is that the permaity has made that good faith effort to exercise the permit. The land use is permitted still, the project is still in compliance with the Development Code, the General Plan, and any applicable specific plan, and there's no changes to the character of the site that affect the consistency with the regulatory documents. No changes to the capacity, and then identify, determine if no, there are no changes to the capacity of community resources. Since the car wash project was approved, the applicants have submitted building permit plans for the Hotel and Conference Center. They've been diligently pursuing this work, doing revisions, working with staff to meet the conditions of approval. Earlier this year, they pulled a grading permit and commenced grading on the site. And you'll, you know, I'm sure you've all seen out there that the project is, a lot of trees have been taken out, and they've worked on grading that site. And we're anticipating that the building permit will be ready to issue before the end of the year. There were no new changes to the General Plan that'll impact the project. The only component of the project that was reviewed under the 2025 General Plan since the last amendment was the car wash, but since then, no new changes have occurred to the General Plan that impact this project. The Development Code, there were some changes, but none that impact the project, and there are no new changes to the community resources. There was no public comment submitted on this time extension, and based off of some notes from our chair, we did note that there are some corrections that staff is recommending for conditions 3B, 3C, and 3D, changing the effective date, which says March 12th, 2028. Actually, the effective date, if you take action tonight, would be 10 days from today, which is November 3rd, 2025. So staff's recommendation tonight is to adopt Resolution 2025-14, approving the two-year time extension as well as that recommended correction, and determining the project exempt from further environmental review pursuant to Section 15061b3. You have alternatives, as always. You can continue the public hearing to a date in time certain. You can request more information from me or staff or the applicant, or you can apply or modify the conditions, or you could deny the project if you feel that the findings can't be made. And if you do take action tonight, the appeal period ends 10:31 at 5 o'clock PM, which after the weekend will be then the effective date, November 3rd. I'm here for any questions.
Thanks. Let's just put together clarifying questions, if any, for the applicant and staff. I have one quick one. Just can you remind me how many of the condos were built the last time of the extension? How many had been built then? Was it four the last time when we corrected it?
The, only the fourplexes were built, the fourplex.
So we've now added the 12. Okay. All ahead. Commissioners?
I just have one question. How many, if any, time extensions are left after this?
Should no changes be made to the project? They could ask for, they could come back and ask for two additional years, for a total of six years because they have a map attached to this project. I do know that the applicants are considering coming in for a project amendment again, which would then reset that clock. Thanks.
No questions.
If there are no more questions, I'm going to open this for public comment. Last time, if you have a public comment on this particular item, please step to the podium. Being none, I'm going to close public comment and open it up for deliberation. It seems to me like they've made an effort to continue this, this project and they're in the middle of it. Does anyone have any comments about their progress or any reason it seems like they might not have made a good effort?
Are the, are the affordable housing units on time per the requirements?
The four, fourplexes are their inclusionary housing requirement, and then there are five more in the 21 loft units. And I believe that they are not required to build, though, I would have to double-check, but they would, they aren't required to build those until the commercial units, more townhomes come online or the commercial units come online.
I think, I think I can make the findings from that previous slide.
I feel like I can. Any concerns or questions? Does anybody, would anybody care to move on this one?
I'll make a motion. I move that we adopt Resolution Number 2025-14, approving a two-year time extension for the previously approved Village at Gray's Crossing Project Amendment with the recommended correction, determining the project exempt from further environmental review pursuant to Section 15061b3 of SEQA.
Second.
Chair Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Vice Chair Taylor.
Yes.
Commissioner Toops.
Yes.
Commissioner Kaufman.
Yes.
Motion passes. Congratulations on the extension. Go forth and extend. Moving on to Item 7, our public hearings for major review. Item 7.1 is Gray's Crossing Lot F Development Permit. I believe we have a brief staff presentation on this one.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. Tonight, I'm here with Gray's Crossing Lot F Development Permit and Tendentive Map, Application 202279, Item 7.1. After discussion with the applicants this evening, the applicants have requested to continue this planning application to date in time uncertain. They would like to explore some phasing options to further phase their development permit. So, you know, they won't be in for many time extensions, I would believe. So that is what they're requesting this evening. Staff and the applicants will work together to bring a phasing plan along with Lot F in the near future.
I don't think we probably have any questions about that, but just in case. And I do believe I am supposed to open it for public comment nonetheless, so I am opening this for public comment. Do we have anyone? Being none, I'm closing public comment, moving on to deliberation. Would anyone care to move regarding this continuation?
Do we need a motion or?
I think we need one.
Yes.
Okay, I move that we continue to date in time uncertain the planning application 2022-79.
Thank you.
Oh, nope, you have to vote and second.
Would anyone care to second that?
I'll second that.
Chair Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Vice Chair Taylor.
Yes.
Commissioner Toops.
Yes.
Commissioner Kaufman.
Yes.
Excellent. That motion passes. Moving on to Item 7.2, 2040 General Plan Amendments, digging into the code. First, we have a staff presentation by Laura.
All right. Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. We're here to talk about our second round of General Plan implementation. We have a few different topics for you to consider this evening. One is a set of Development Code Amendments that are to implement the General Plan. We have some zoning map amendments, some cleanup amendments to the General Plan, and a round of just regular Development Code cleanups. If you choose to take action tonight, you'll be forwarding a recommendation, and the next step in the process will be the Town Council review. So a quick overview of what we are going to be talking about this evening. The first is the Development Code Amendments for General Plan Implementation. First is the creation of the Business Innovation Zoning District, updates to the Highway Commercial Zoning District, and then some cleanups for General Plan consistency. The zoning map amendments are proposed to bring the zoning maps into compliance with the General Plan land use designations. And then we have some cleanups to the land use diagram as well. And then, again, some general cleanups to the Development Code. So our first topic this evening is the Business Innovation Zoning District. This is the area circled in red here. It's in Pioneer Commerce Center, the Phase 1 of the development. In the General Plan, there is a new designation that was created that was focused on flex industrial space and customer service industrial and service commercial uses. We provided some examples of that, and then some density intensity standards. So what we're proposing tonight is a zoning designation to implement that, General Plan designation. This would just apply to Phase 1 of Pioneer Commerce Center, to the south of Pioneer Trail. That area was previously designated industrial in the General Plan and is currently zoned manufacturing. When the Pioneer Commerce Center project was approved back in 2002, there was a planned development that was part of that project, and it allowed for a broader range of commercial uses than would otherwise have been allowed under the manufacturing zoning. During the General Plan process, one of the topics of discussion was creating this new designation to essentially acknowledge how the Phase 1 of Pioneer Commerce Center has evolved over time, the types of uses that have been successful there, and the fact that there's a niche that those are filling, but it isn't necessarily consistent with the underlying manufacturing zoning. So what was adopted was the Business Innovation Designation. So as I mentioned, that is really focused on those customer service industrial, customer service-facing industrial and service commercial uses, also workforce housing and work-liv units. So in coming up with the proposed zoning, we worked with the property owner, Sarah Mancuso. We reviewed all of the current uses that are allowed to the planned development and the underlying manufacturing zoning and talked through, you know, which uses would be compatible with this new designation in the General Plan. So the Business Innovation Zoning standards reflect our recommendations as staff with input from the property owner. So what you'll see are existing uses that are allowed to the planned development. Those are incorporated into the use tables and some updates to the permit requirements to bring them in line to with the permit requirements for those uses in other parts of town. And then there's additional uses we proposed that we thought were consistent with the goals of the designation in the General Plan for those service commercial and sort of light industrial uses. We didn't recommend any heavy industrial because we felt that those are more appropriate in the manufacturing zone. And there were a couple of uses in the planned development that we didn't carry over because those also didn't seem consistent with the new designation. So our proposed amendments tonight are a few different sections of the Development Code. And our next topic is the Highway Commercial Zoning District. There are a few parcels in town, you can see in red there, that are currently designated as Highway Commercial. The General Plan provided some direction to transition away from freeway-oriented development and to replace the Highway Commercial zoning with new zoning that would reflect the corresponding land use designation, which is commercial. So the original purpose of the Highway Commercial Zone was really to provide highway and tourist-oriented services. And with the new direction in the General Plan to move away from freeway-oriented development, we considered whether it made sense to create a new zoning designation and ultimately felt that applying the general commercial zoning that we already have would be appropriate. That would provide a broader mix of commercial uses, and it would also provide services for nearby residents that aren't currently allowed under the Highway Commercial zoning. So as I said, there would be some new uses allowed. There's a whole range of those. A lot of those would provide more services to the surrounding neighborhoods, and we think it's consistent with the General Plan direction. So those amendments tonight would be several sections of the Development Code and then also amending the zoning map to change the zoning to general commercial. Next, we have a list of cleanups for the General Plan. And I just included an overview slide. We can circle back and talk about any of these if you have specific questions. These are very minor updates. That's why we propose them as cleanups rather than discussion topics. They're really just to ensure that we're maintaining consistency between the Development Code and the General Plan. And then we'll go through these really quickly. These are the zoning map amendments that are proposed. This was the Business Innovation Zone that we talked about. This is changing the Highway Commercial to General Commercial. There are some amendments to implement the General Plan direction about expanding the ground floor commercial requirements that currently apply to commercial roads so that those are expanded in downtown. This is a rezone of a property from low-density to medium-density residential to be consistent with the General Plan. We have some public facilities zoning that's proposed for the Alder Creek Middle School site that was previously zoned planned community. There's a few different ones on this slide. The Sierra College campus, we're proposing that to be public facilities. There's an open space corridor where the Land Trust property is, and then a rail transportation corridor property. And these are some additional rail transportation properties downtown. And then there's a piece along Donner Creek that's designated in the General Plan as open space. For our General Plan land use diagram, which you see here, we had a couple of cleanups. We've come across some inconsistencies and mapping errors from implementing all of the new General Plan designations. So one was this area around Donner Lake that's at the West End. It was inadvertently changed to rural residential. It should have been very low residential. And then this piece is the HOA parcel at West End. It was inadvertently changed to residential, and it should have been open space recreation. And then we have a smaller list of just regular cleanups, which we do periodically to try to address any confusing text or errors that we want to clarify. So again, we can talk about any of these in greater depth if you have questions. So our recommendation tonight would be to adopt Resolution 2025-13, recommending to the Town Council that the approval of the Development Code Amendments for Business Innovation, Highway Commercial, and General Plan cleanups, the zoning map amendments, General Plan cleanup amendments, and Development Code cleanup amendments. And we're recommending that the amendments be exempt from SEQA. So that's all I have for the staff presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
Is your mic on?
Does anybody have any 30,000-foot level questions about what's going on here? I mean, I have questions and comments, but it's more of a process that I think we could do during deliberation. If there's no specific questions at this point, I think I should open public comment. If you have a comment, please step to the podium. You'll be limited to three minutes. State your name for the record, and then when you're done, hand it to Kaylee. Being no public comment, I'm closing public comment. Opening it for deliberation, I propose we just flip through what we have in the order. It was presented in the packet. Would that work for all of you? Okay, my first thing's on page 223. Does anybody have anything before that?
So which pack, are you on the staff report or are you in the actual attachment?
I'm in the attachment.
Okay, great. And then are we using the PDF pages or the?
We do not have the, these numbered.
Yeah, okay, 223.
223.
I don't, 220, 2-23?
Roman numeral 2.
Oh, I'm way ahead of that.
Okay, so probably this is the first early one then.
Yeah.
Okay, so in Section B on page 2, Roman numeral 2-23, "Density Based on Bedrooms," it was just a little bit confusing wording, I thought. "The developer may request that the allowed number of dwelling units be based on the number." I think we could leave out the word "also," I think that is confusing. It sounds like you could base it on both things at the same time, which I don't think they do. I would like to strike the word "also" from paragraph B2, third line.
I think what it's saying is, so under subsection 1, I think it's saying that it's based on the zoning suffix, and then subsection 2 is saying you can also ask for the dwelling unit equivalent.
But you need to do one or the other, right?
Well, the base density would be based on whatever the suffix is for the zoning district, and then from there, you would adjust it based on the...
Okay, cool.
I actually had a question on something before that page. It's page 2-6. It's section 18640. And I just was confused, and this might just be a cleanup thing. So it's permit requirements for zoning. This is saying a zoning clearance is required for, and we've added a clause B, "Single-family residences of less than 7,500 square feet." So is that, my understanding is we already require zoning clearances for all single-family residential projects?
No. So if, so if it's a single-family that's in the downtown and it's over the 5,000-square-foot limit, then it would trigger a development permit. So we pulled this language over from the other chapter of the code, which had the same language. So if it's a, so the 7,500-square-foot cap is the total amount of floor area that can be on a property, a residential property, under a different section of the code?
Yeah, I, yeah. So this is saying a zoning clearance is required for projects of pretty much any project outside of the downtown of, you know, any size, i.e. below the cap, or a project less than 5,000 square feet, and that requires a zoning clearance?
Okay, so I see what you're saying. You think that this would apply to all single-family, the way, the way it's written.
Yeah.
The way it's written.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I see what you're saying.
You're looking at paragraph 2 on page 26, is that right?
2-6, yeah.
Can we remove the extra space between that and the semicolon then, as long as we're looking at that paragraph, please?
I'm looking at?
Sure.
B1, A1B.
Yeah, B1, A1B.
Yeah. So I just, when I read that, I read that says like, okay, now we require zoning clearance for all single-family homes or a development permit if it's over 5,000 square feet in the downtown core. And I just want to confirm that that's the intent.
Yeah, so we're just having a side conversation that technically we do require a zoning clearance for all single family. It just happens to come up mostly as part of our building permit review. We don't do a separate land use permit for that. So it's just wrapped into what the planners do when they get a new application for a single-family home. They check it for consistency with the zoning, so setbacks, site coverage, all that stuff. But we call it a zoning clearance. It's confusing.
So it's not adding a new step? All right, I just wanted to confirm that. Okay. Next page we might have questions on?
I'm at 229.
2-29? Okay. I, my next question was on page, I guess this is, I can save this one for the end, which because it maybe is, no, I'll just ask you now. So my understanding, so there's a single-family cap on, in our town of 7,500 square feet and that's per parcel. Is that correct?
So under the, you're talking about 1808070, the maximum gross floor area?
Yeah, it's kind of in there. It's kind of like, it's kind of in many places. I just want to confirm, is that correct?
So this talks about the cumulative gross floor area on a parcel, not being able to exceed that.
Okay, so if you're doing a project, single-family project, call it, you know, you've got a main house, you've got the guest house, you've got a big garage. All of that combined cannot exceed 7,500. Then there's no exceptions? That's, that's a hard cap under all cases?
Yeah, there is an exception for certain types of ADUs that don't count toward that.
Okay. Where is that? That is totally not tied to like parcel size, right? Like if the lot was 25 acres, it wouldn't matter.
Right. We do have requirements based on parcel size for things like, you know, open space and things like that that are related to the parcel, but this is just a set number.
I'm guessing it's outside the scope of this hearing, but I guess I'm kind of wondering why we have that policy because I get having an FAR-based limit, right? But to me, if the parcel's big enough, if the lot is big enough, you could imagine a slightly larger, more built-out home. Or I guess the, you know, could a property owner divide their lot into multiple lots and then build like 7,500 on each? I'm just curious like how they would get, you know, they could, I'm seeing.
I mean, and we'll say anecdotally, we're not really getting homes coming in larger than 7,500 square feet. It's even rare that we get anything above about 6,000 is kind of our top end. So I think when this got added, it was sort of a buffer area for what we had witnessed coming in for building permits plus a little extra.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I think it would be unusual and I think it would be an extreme corner case, but, you know, I don't know. It's probably outside the scope of this hearing.
You might have to pare your plans back to 7,500, Jason.
Well, it's more like if you're building a compound, right? Like if you were putting like multiple, but I guess you would do a lot subdivision if that was your, or that would be your way around it, so to speak. Yeah, okay. I think that was my next, yeah, your 22-29?
Your mic. Turk Kavanaugh, sorry.
Sorry, sorry. So as long as you're looking at that paragraph, please remove, just remove the comma after the word "area" between "area" and "may." Either that or you need to set off that clause with a comma before it. I'm trying not to do this, but since we're looking at that paragraph. Last one.
Where are we in the code?
The paragraph that Jason was just looking at.
2-25?
Sorry, page 2, Roman numeral 2-25, 1808070A. Last sentence. Other applicable land use entitlement processes, comma, for other requests beyond the required maximum gross floor area, comma, may be required. I won't do that unless we're looking at the paragraph. Okay, my next one's on 229. Anybody have for that?
I have a lot of comments and questions about the BI zoning. Should we?
So do I, yeah.
Open them up now for that? Go ahead though, Chair.
Well, I mean, I'm looking at the table here, table 27, and a bunch of things popped up in here. So my first one was on the first part of it, the first page that we had, 229. Why are nature reserves and trails allowed in the BI zone but not in DMU and NMU? What's the reasoning behind that?
I'm not sure. So when we pulled that over, it was allowed in all of the other manufacturing and commercial use line items in this table, so we brought that over to Business Innovation as well since it's similar.
Seems like trails and open space would work, would also work in mixed use? But if that's something that's not, they just didn't appear there.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't go back and look at all the other zoning to see where those uses were allowed.
I just didn't, why allow it there and not in the others? That's a question I have. Next page.
Which, so which zones did you think it?
Well.
I mean, I can make a note that?
I mean, it doesn't make sense. Neighborhood mixed use.
Okay.
CMU and NMU.
CMU and NMU. Okay, got it.
And then on the next page, 2-30. So you said you discussed this with Sarah. Makerspace and manufacturing are not allowed in Business Innovation on this table? And I know that that type of manufacturing is different than handcraft industries and small-scale manufacturing.
Right.
But a makerspace would not be allowed in a business?
So we allow a craft makerspace, I believe.
Okay.
That section of the table, which is, seems more consistent with a light industrial than a heavy industrial type of makerspace use.
Okay. Just looking for the reasoning.
So I hate to bring this up, but based on previous conversations we've had up here about makerspace and manufacturing and light industrial or heavy industrial slash furniture making, would we cover furniture making in what is allowed in the Business Innovation District? I believe so because I think, here, let's?
Furniture is approved. Furniture and fixtures manufacturing, permitted use.
Okay.
It's a little higher on that scene.
And I think the reason that the manufacturing makerspace definition wasn't included, you know, based on Laura's conversations with Sarah, is that he tends to want to separate uses that are noisy and have more activity with it than the other uses. And so Business Innovation just wasn't at that level of intensity and that the craft level was more, more consistent.
Something that would be more appropriate for an area containing customer-serving businesses. So when we talk about a craft-level makerspace like the Roundhouse, that wouldn't show up in a BI? I mean, or does that include it in?
It's in retail or it's in service uses, sorry. Craft makerspace isn't service uses, not manufact. It's in a different, it's in like the next page.
Can you tell me where?
Yeah, so if you go to the next page, I think, or two pages on actually, it's under Service Uses, table 2-7, page 2-33. It's right, there's like a slew of medical services. It's the right one right above it.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. Okay. My next question was why not multifamily dwellings? Because dwellings are allowed in BI?
So the only two types of housing that were identified in the general plan were workforce and work live. So that's why we only included those two.
Do those not fall under the multifamily dwelling umbrella?
Well, multifamily is broader than those two and those were specifically identified. I mean, that could be, if you wanted to make a recommendation to council that they consider allowing residential residential?
If workforce housing is addressed there, which it is in this table, that's fine with me. Anybody else chime in if they're on these pages?
Yeah, I spent some time tying the old PD to the proposed list of uses and I also met with Sarah very briefly. So I know he's very happy with everything on here, but there were a few uses that were in the PD that are not permitted in this list and they do not currently exist there. So that, you know, maybe they were unnecessary, but I just wanted to call them out just so everyone's on this dais is aware. They were theaters/meeting halls, which is now called theaters and event spaces in our code. The other one was bars and drinking establishments, but we created a new category called breweries for that, which I thought was interesting. Lauren, I had a very good conversation. I want, it was helpful for me to understand how they relate. And then the last one was car wash, which I could see why that might be too intense of a use, but I just wanted to, those were the three that I, when I did the sort of crosswalk that?
Thank you.
Did not show up. In terms of deliberations, I, I felt really good about the distinction between breweries. So I feel that car wash might be too intensive a use and I think we've already, I was not on this mission when?
It has come up.
But I'm sure you have feelings. We, the breweries versus, so I point, you know, I was looking at the definitions. There's, we have kind of three related categories of breweries, drinking establishments, and beverage production. And Laura explained the difference between them. I don't know if you want to cover that at all or if other people want to hear that covered.
We have those edits in the definitions if?
Yes, they're in the definitions, yeah. I think the only thing I wanted to kind of point, like I was looking at it again, we do allow beverage production facilities in, I'm on page 2-30. Beverage production and food production is the second outline item, I think. Is that the same? That's what I'm looking at. And we do allow it in general commercial and service commercial with a conditional use permit. We don't allow breweries with the same type of UP use permit. I'm wondering if we should, just to be consistent, because I think the idea is that a brewery is the more general commercial version of a beverage production facility. I'm looking over here, but I'm also looking over here.
So are you saying add breweries as a use permit required in general commercial?
In, yeah, general commercial and service commercial, just to be consistent with the line item for beverage production. Because that, what I always explain to me is that breweries allow up to 50% of the space to be retail center or tasting room, right? And beverage production only allows up to 25% because it's an ancillary use. And my thinking is if you could have a brewery, sorry, a beverage production facility in general commercial with only 25% tasting room, you should probably also be able to have a brewery with up to 50% tasting room because that's a more consumer-focused experience. Not that I think anything has ever happened in our town that would put one of these facilities in the, like downtown core, but just to be consistent.
Yeah, that's interesting. I didn't even know it was a use permit in those zones because we've never, I was just asking if we've ever permitted anything. And it, it is an interesting use in a commercial zone to put a production use there even with a use permit. That's definitely something you could consider.
Yeah, I would, I mean, the alternative is to take it out of the CG and CS. I don't know if we can.
I mean, I think the other thing we would need to look at before finalizing that discussion is the Jorga Ranch specific plan and the Railyard Master Plan because what we don't want to do is create inconsistencies where there's sort of a monopoly in potential uses in one area of town and not another. So we haven't taken the time to look at that, but we could.
Yeah, I think it'd be good for discussion, whether it's at this level or at Town Council level, of whether breweries could be in those general commercial spaces and service. I really think of it as being more appropriate for service commercial, but just, or maybe taking it out, taking beverage production out of those two, I think, just to be consistent.
Okay, I mean, we can definitely, depending on where you go tonight, if you want to make a recommendation or not, we could definitely include that as something for council to think about.
And then the last one was, I kind of am leaning towards adding theaters and event space as a, maybe a conditionally permitted use. Well, I think a movie theater would probably not be appropriate and I know today there's no space for that sort of thing. The theater and event space does include community event rooms and spaces and to me, that fits very well under the service commercial intent of Business Innovation, so.
Parking can be an issue for that.
Good point, although if it's done at the right time, you know, right, that is very much a mixed-use zone where parking can't be challenging during the day, but it's usually not so challenging at night.
So I think if that's something that you want to deliberate on, I would just recommend thinking about whether you feel like that's consistent with the Business Innovation purpose.
Can you pull up the general plan language?
And the definition of theaters and event spaces is indoor facilities for group entertainment other than sporting events, including civic theaters and facilities, exhibition and convention halls, indoor event spaces, motion picture theaters, and public and semi-public auditoriums. Kind of broad.
Right, so that could allow something like a movie theater, which is definitely more of a commercial use than an industrial or service commercial use. So as you're deciding whether you think that would be an appropriate addition, I would just recommend.
Today, where is, is movie theaters in the service commercial section?
I think it's just under the definition that you just read. That includes all types of theaters.
So right now theaters are only permitted in general commercial and neighborhood commercial.
They're also allowed in the Railyard Master Plan and also in the Jorga Ranch specific plan. And we had done an economic analysis for both of those master and specific plans. And one of the things we learned as part of that process was that there's a substantial amount of land typically that people want, partially for parking, but because those uses tend to be bigger, not to say that we couldn't get a smaller version of that in, you know, a different economic climate, but that was just sort of the history of why we didn't necessarily have that as a use out here because we'd already allotted different parts of town where it was permitted.
I kind of was thinking there's, there's plenty of other places it could go. I don't know that we would need to shoehorn that in as a, unless there's a driving need or desire to have that happen. We can foment on that one, we'll come back to it. I'm going to try to do this on the Agenda Packet page numbers. Hopefully that'll be. Okay. Done with that one. Moving through to page.
Should we talk about the recommendation that Highway Commercial be replaced with General Commercial? Since we're kind of in that zone?
That was part of the land, I mean, that's part, was part of the land use discussion in the general plan. I don't know, is that something we can even revisit now? We're just, I mean, we're going to, if we go through the Agenda Packet, we'll get to those maps, but it does affect some of the text.
Yeah, so the general plan said that we need to rezone the Highway Commercial. It didn't specifically say to what? And the only thing that we had committed to publicly with the council is that we would broaden the allowed uses versus decreasing. Can we bring up the zoning map just so we can see whether the surrounding uses of those or the surrounding zoning of those formerly, soon-to-be formerly commercial highway, highway commercial?
I did have a question about that. Yeah, so I drove out there, what, and I, on Deerfield, the eastern part of it, what is that little triangle portion right now? Why is it zoned that way?
I think that's in the Coldstream specific plan area. It must just be a remnant.
I mean, it's on the other side. I think that, if I, seems like that's either on the gravel portion or it's on a section of it and the only thing I could think was there, there's a church there and that wouldn't be?
Sounds like it was, it's a house and maybe was existing and that's why they didn't re?
It was existing before the Coldstream specific plan and they were not interested in selling to Tykert when Tykert was doing the specific plan and they weren't interested in changing any of their zoning.
It's actually dirt road access.
Yeah, why would it be, you know, why would it have ever been commercial highway?
Maybe it was like a repair yard or something at one point.
Yeah.
Can I, can I ask, what was the general plan discussion around this beyond, was it just to add more flexibility or just like kind of more of the background?
And move away from the highway, the freeway-oriented?
Yeah, it was primarily because we're not really a, we're trying not to be a highway-oriented community and we knew that with the specific plan being implemented that we would have more residents, hopefully more people that were year, year-round, full-time. And it would be better to have something that was more local serving versus highway serving.
Yeah, the only uses that I see in Highway Commercial that are not in general commercial was repair slash maintenance for vehicles and transit stations and terminals. So those would fall under highway-oriented that we are trying to get away from while we're expanding everything else. So I think the proposal to use general commercial is a really good one.
Yeah, and during the general plan update process, we also added in concurrently the ability to have schools with a use permit. So that was sort of a preemptive, which we would have normally done with the zone change, but it but it just worked out that way.
Yeah, I agree, I think it makes sense. I, I like that we're moving away from that highway-oriented design and services to create services for the community, especially on this side of town in particular, where we've been doing that. So I like to see the continuation of that with this general commercial designation.
Okay.
Those are all my questions on the land use tables, I think, yeah.
Going back to the flipping through here on agenda packet. Table 2-7 for commercial and man. I've got it on page 2-35. That's on page 174 of the agenda packet. It looks like commercial parking and vehicle storage are allowed in the business innovation area. I know we have vehicle storage for boats in that general neighborhood, but is there any reason we need to have, that's a pretty big use in terms of its intensity of building size and commercial parking and vehicle storage? Doesn't seem to me to go with business innovation district, was that requested?
No, that, so that was either something that was in the plan development, I don't remember, or, or it was allowed through the M zoning, but if the commission doesn't think that that's.
I would like to see no on that, because there's, it's allowed, I assume it's allowed next door in the, the other part of the Pioneer, I can't remember what phase that's called, because there is a big boat storage building there.
Yeah, that's in phase two, so yeah, that's allowed.
It doesn't even seem like there's room for that in the new BI section. Is that something we need to leave in there because that would be an appropriate use in other places that might become BI? I don't think it's appropriate in BI, let me just say that.
I think you could take it out, and if there ends up being more business innovation down the road, and there's opportunity to add that in if it's appropriate at that point.
What are, I see that it's, it's conditional use, requiring a use permit, what would the findings be that would need to be made in order to allow it?
So, I mean, really, the findings are looking at compatibility between different uses.
Right.
Yeah.
And is this, just for Mike to clarify, is this commercial parking like a parking lot? Or is it parking of commercial vehicles? Because I know that's come up in this area, I don't know if it's been in phase one or in this new proposed BI designation, but people looking to park work trucks, things like that, which, is it both, is it one or the other?
I mean, it's, it's mostly just like a commercial parking lot, so like, someone wanted to charge people to park there. So we were just talking about, I don't think we've ever had that proposed.
Yeah, if that's the case, then I, I'm in favor of probably removing it as well.
I, I, I'm probably leaning towards keeping it just because it's in manufacturing and service commercial, and if I envision BI as kind of an in-between of those with a slightly more human scale, like, I agree, it's probably not appropriate, but with the appropriate, acknowledging that it would require a conditional use permit anyway, I would, I would expect the future commission, I would be potentially hearing this, which I think would probably never happen anyway, would like, apply the appropriate guidelines, unless, I mean, who knows what the future holds, I never know. That would be my, but, but I, you know, I see there's very good arguments for it to not belong as well. It was in, it was in the original PD plan development, that's why it's here, I think, as well.
Probably because there's a, it's there. It's already there. And they wanted to do that, and it's there, but I, I, I would be against this because I don't think parking lots, vehicle storage are consistent with an area where you want customer-serving business. Unless there's really, really a dearth of parking there, you have to have a parking. But since our, our code requires a certain amount of parking for each business, that should be appropriate already, so I'm in favor of removing it. I don't think we have a consensus. What do we do? Do we have, we don't, we're not going to vote on that each one by one, so.
I think ultimately, someone will make a recommendation at the end, and if that's something, then you could take a vote on it if that's included. You could also do a vote, like a mini-vote, and just see what everyone's support for that or not would be, so you know going forward.
Who would like to leave parking into, this is the simple one, who would like to leave parking in the BI area, commercial parking and vehicle storage? Would like to remove it? Move. A recommendation, please take a note of it. Moving on.
Well, if we're here, should we talk about the beverage brewery thing?
Yes, if there's other things on this, on this section.
Do people want to leave it exactly as is, consider adding it as a use permit required for general commercial or service commercial, or recommend taking it, taking beverage production out of general commercial or service commercial? I think those would be the three, like, kind of directions.
You take them out, and then where do you leave them?
They're currently in manufacturing, and beverage production is in manufact, is a permitted use in manufacturing zones. And.
We also approved it in the rail yard.
And the rail yard?
Yep. Oh, I don't think we did, we approved the taproom.
Yeah, that's, that's an ancillary use, it's less than 25% of the restaurant, essentially.
I, I think what you're just saying is that there's other places where you could do it. But the taproom concept allows for the beverage, in more in concert with the BI concept of serve, public-serving businesses and innovative manufacturing.
There is, there is a brewery somewhere in.
Pioneer.
Pioneer.
Yeah.
It's not in that.
No, it's, it's west of their Tahoe Mountain Brewery.
There's actually two, and they were both approved as production with an accessory, like tasting room area.
The brewery category would let them, in theory, have more tasting room area, right? So that's kind of why I think the brewery could be appropriate in a, not that it is likely, but it could be appropriate in a general commercial or service commercial, and if, with the, you know, requiring a use permit, I think makes sense in those zones, right? Because if it's going to have significant impacts on neighbors, then it would not be appropriate, but if it doesn't, and, you know, there's a good business model there, I think, I think a brewery could be an appropriate thing.
Yeah, I could, I'm, I can get behind that.
Yeah. I'm, I'm hearing three, four yeses? Okay.
And then would the recommendation be for staff to make sure it's consistent with the other specific plans? Is that this one, or was that another use that we were talking about earlier?
Yeah, I think this was the one, but we would have, we would need to do a little research.
You can do research, yeah. Overrule that if, if the research comes back really different.
But I think noted as a recommendation to explore.
Based on what we know now, could be a good idea.
So kind of the flip side of that would be, in the manufacturing zone, do you support the expanded sort of commercial use?
I, I think I do, I think, I think it can make a lot of sense for a business to have more retail space.
There's a reason we typically separate manufacturing from other uses, because no one wants to have a rendering plant next to their commercial, you know, taproom. So I don't know if it's appropriate to have a place where people would be coming and sampling beverages in the manufacturing district, way back when, Euclidean zoning kind of thing.
Well, I'll just add that we, we tend to be a little bit protective of our M zones, because what we hear all the time is that we don't have enough, and we have a lot of uses that need that zoning, that are truly manufacturing, you know, or only manufacturing, not half-retail or whatnot. So we are trying to kind of support that segment of our business community, and trying to dedicate as much M zoning as we can to them, but certainly I understand the comment from Commissioner Troops as well, but that's why we have, you know, some bookends on what a retail intrusion we can have into our M zone.
I think that, to me, that, that strikes me because, so you're saying that if we dilute what's allowed in the M zone, it might make it more difficult for manufacturing? And I would.
Yes, that was more succinctly, succinctly stated than what I came up with.
No, but that, I'm just trying to make sure I understood, so.
But it's not a revolution, right now, right now, a manufacturer can put, can take any, lease any space, and put 25% of their fourth floor area towards the tasting room, and this allows them to do it up to 50%. It's not like it's replacing a, what would be a production facility with purely a restaurant.
But is it, so if we remove it from manufacturing, but then, no, I mean, that's totally fair, but I think, you know, use permits are required, would be potentially if this goes forward. So there is, you know, a level of saturation that could be hit before it's all breweries along every commercial core in the town.
What's the difference between a minor use permit and the conditional, you know, a use permit in terms of, you know, maybe the findings or what you'd have to prove in order to, because I see that to put brewery in manufacturing would require a minor use permit.
Yeah, so it's really the difference between zoning administrator review or planning commission?
I'd be open to dropping that to use permit, so it has a higher standard of scrutiny in the manufacturing zone, in order to give kind of other manufacturers an opportunity to weigh in, or the public to weigh in and say, yeah, it shouldn't go next to X.
I mean, I'm, I guess I'm open to that, too. I, I just feel like we're throwing something in there that doesn't need to be in there. I'm flexible on that, with, because they'll have review. We have a suggested recommendation on that. Included in manufacturing with a use permit required, is that what you said, Jason?
Yes, instead of minor use, which is the way it's currently written on page 2-32. More work for planning commission, but.
We also want to avoid that. No, it's good that if, if, if we're not 100% certain that it belongs in that district, either we leave it out, or we up the requirement for review.
Yeah, I think it gives the public the opportunity to weigh in.
So are you just thinking of changing that to a use permit, or did you still want to look at the other commercial zones as well?
I think, I think we are kind of circling around up for, in the M district, changing breweries to be a use permit. And I think we heard openness to allowing it in commercial, service commercial and/or general commercial, exploring that at least, I think, maybe we need more information before we can like firmly say one way.
I'm open having a use permit in those two.
Yeah, use permit required, of course, yeah.
Add that to our list of recommendations, review that all at the end, just check in, see how we feel about it. Moving forward, Donner Pass parking and vehicle storage. Okay, continuing table 2-8, this is page 2-37. Printed it out before I had. Allowed uses for downtown. Libraries and museums are not allowed on the first floor in the downtown commercial core. Why aren't museums, are museums just too quiet, do the retail owners there do not like to have museums next door? Wouldn't museums be a pedestrian-oriented thing like the Truckee History Museum at the depot? Why wouldn't museums be allowed on the ground floor?
I mean, we just don't have very many museum uses, so I don't know if there's a specific reason why we don't think it's appropriate. I mean, the ones that we have don't tend to have consistent hours, where retail's more sort of eight to five. Yeah, I mean, I haven't really seen a museum that's kind of got the same schedule and retail focus.
So there's not, okay, so there's not a specific reason we're prohibiting them on the ground floor? If there was, I would just want to know, that's fine. Any edits there?
I had a question, and I emailed this to Laura, but I, it'd be helpful just to hear it again. There's a lot of overlapping language, and I thought, what's the difference between the downtown commercial zoning district, the commercial row overlay, it's an overlay, I think, and commercial core overlay? Just like, help me understand the Venn diagram.
Yeah, so you have the overall, you know, zoning district that these areas are in, which is mostly DMU, I think. Then the commercial row overlay is what we have in the code now. What the general plan did was say that we needed to expand that to these other areas, and it had very specific language.
To encompass the commercial core.
Oh wait, so what does DC stand for on this table? Sorry.
Downtown commercial zoning.
That's a zoning, wait, that's different than DMU, though.
Right, that's downtown mixed use.
Which is the, different than the DM next to it, right?
Yeah, so I think there are DC parcels south of Donner Pass Road.
The rail yard.
I think there's some railroad parcels that have that to kind of reflect existing commercial buildings.
So your Venn diagram is that the row is a subset of the core? And we no longer, I mean, there's plenty of language still in here that refers to both the row and the core, but the, the row is just from Spring to Bridge on the north side of.
And both these terms are staying in, is that correct?
It seems, that's what it appears to be, and, because I had the same question until I got to a much deeper, and I searched the code to find the row.
I thought we were replacing the row with the core, but then I kind of was corrected.
Does the row have some specifics that we need to maintain? I mean, because it is very special, and it's an important part of our community character, do we need to?
I mean, that's, our national registered district boundary is from Spring to Bridge, so it's sort of a legacy name for that section of downtown.
It's not a regulatory name for that section anymore, though, right?
No.
The core has now replaced any regulatory, so every time we say, these uses are prohibited on ground floor spaces in the downtown commercial core, sometimes we say, these uses are prohibited. Did we, did we always take out the row? I saw some, I thought I saw some rows.
No, we have a lot of places say row and core, and that's what I was confused about.
Same reason it was confusing to me. Why refer to both of them if one doesn't exist anymore? So I guess my recommendation would be to take out those references, especially when they're side by side.
I think we could, I think we could reword it, I did go back and look at this after your questions today. I, I think we didn't want to take it out because it's the existing, where the existing overlay is, and we don't want to create confusion that people might not necessarily, they know what commercial row is, they don't maybe buy that name, they might not necessarily know the street names and where it's located, but I think we could reword this to say something about ground floor spaces in the downtown commercial core, and then have the parameters that are sort of laid out in the general plan, and then somehow reference the commercial row as part of that, if that would be clear.
I would suggest that, and, and when you do talk about the core, use the description that includes Spring to Bridge.
Yeah.
Does that confuse me?
That was what I, I thought it was a typo, but now I understand.
So did I.
Yeah, so I think, okay, so we can make an edit that says from.
Is it Spring to the rail yard?
So the core will now be a broader subset that includes the entire row, plus a few more areas, is that what you're saying? They're not mutually exclusive zones, they are comprehensive.
The row is part of the core.
So we could say from Spring Street to the rail yard boundary, including commercial row or something like that.
That would be good, because that reminds, people don't know what the row is, which most people do, yeah.
Okay, so basically, what we're contemplating here, or we're discussing here is, this already, it already was policy that ground floor in the, in the row would not allow these uses.
Right.
Is this a change to, you know, based on the general plan to extend that to the core?
Yes.
Okay. Then I do have more questions.
I have a question, yeah, I have something about the core then.
Can we bring up the map with the new proposed core?
Yes, please. And what was the page that had the table? I lost, you, you just had it.
Downtown core, so this was 240, 241.
Thank you. 2-37 as well. So there are two museums in the core, right? There's the rail. So there are two museums in the core, right? There's the railroad museum and the jail museum. And I think.
Was it a museum or just a historic? It's tours, it's the only open part of the year, it's really about.
I get that we don't want more. I get that, but I don't.
So I think when we added that footnote, the thought was, you know, really the focus is on commercial uses that are going to really activate the ground floor of those spaces. So if you do think that there are some of these recreation, at least that's how they're kind of in the code grouped, uses that you think would activate those downtown streets, I think you could consider adding those or taking the footnote away.
If it's not just a sad museum that's closed all the time, that's not good. I just don't see prohibiting a museum.
Isn't the Chamber of Commerce also there, and they're considered, technically they're membership.
Probably, or a member organizational.
Unless the visitor center is a different category. But I think it's also their offices, right? So it's both.
I'm not going to follow my sword for museums. I just wanted to know why. I mean, I love museums, don't get me wrong, but I'm not going to follow my sword to make sure that they can be included on Donner Pass Road between.
Just a quick question. So DC is downtown core, DM is?
So DC is downtown commercial zoning and DMU is downtown mixed use zoning.
So what's DM?
Downtown manufacturing.
That's kind of like.
Why is there manufacturing?
I don't think we really have.
Road track, is there any of that left now?
Yeah, there's a little bit that hasn't been rezoned because we haven't done the whole river corridor updates yet. But it's pretty minimal, I think, at this point, what we have left that's downtown manufacturing.
This is going to be a strange question, but adult entertainment businesses seem to be mostly in manufacturing areas. It seemed, given that you want to preserve manufacturing, so I'm of a different opinion about the brewery thing, where I'm like, if manufacturing, if we want to preserve that, it should be what that word means. So then why do we suddenly have this not everyone's favorite business? And I'm not saying that I'm going to create one, so this is purely just speculation. It's just an odd thing to then say, but this business, which is controversial, and I'm sure you will build a room if that ever happens, but it shouldn't be in manufacturing, right? That, that should be, you can, you can say it shouldn't be in the downtown core. But it probably should be somewhere, commercial, mixed, maybe not mixed use, because then you get into schools and housing and whatnot. But anyway, you have to find a location for that that's appropriate, that's not in contrast in direct conflict with what you just said about manufacturing, which I do believe we have to preserve. So you might need to find a home for that that makes sense. So as long as.
I agree with that. It's just kind of like, it's the rendering plant and the tannery, you don't want it near any place where people walk around. I think, like, if you drive I-80 through the Sacramento metro area, you see Rancho Cordova on your left, and you see the giant signs for the adult businesses, that's all, it's manufacturing, it's all tilt ups and, and then warehouse type stores, and, and that's where they've placed it. And I guess, and that made me think, I've thought about that, too. It's like, why do we put it there? It's because we don't want it anywhere else. So where do you put it? You don't want it on commercial row?
No.
Yeah, yeah. So I don't know.
It's one of those tricky things, but I just, in the event that someday, somebody comes forward and this is what they want a use permit for, you want a good answer of where you want this particular business and to not say, well, you know, and already have a good answer for where it should be. And manufacturing, probably not, because we don't have a lot of manufacturing, so you don't want to waste that space that you need. So it's just one of those things for future reference for planning folks to think about. Because I have a feeling it may come up. Again, I don't know. I'm just, I keep seeing that going, hmm. That's probably the, that's a place, I understand that's a place where it's usually, and they, those kind of businesses end up, but then funny things happen, like housing is built, like in Reno. We have to, in order to get to Greater Nevada Field, we have to walk by this adult entertainment establishment, which is now MacDab next to residential. So you don't want that kind of accident to happen. So, anyway, food for thought.
Maybe we can make a recommendation, consider, if any, is the best place for the planners here.
Can you put your mic on? Thank you.
Beg pardon. I, I trust the planners of the town of Truckee, but I just wanted to point that out because it made me nervous to just say manufacturing only, especially downtown manufacturing, if there's only a little sliver. And suddenly someone says, hey, I have this great idea. It's going to be next to Dax on the tracks.
Yeah, I mean, I agree that that should be reviewed at some point. I don't know if it's, you know, maybe it might be helpful to kind of do a survey of what similar towns have done and where they locate those types of businesses. Because it's, yeah, it's an odd question, but I also don't know if it's like a priority. But yeah, very, very good point, and something we probably don't think about or pay attention to.
Where do we put that? What's the answer? Yeah.
Going back to the table, I am, I am, the libraries and museums and membership org facilities, I think I'm thinking of two, you know, a couple, like the museums downtown and the Chamber of Commerce, I think fit under those, unless the chamber fits under something else, which we open to. But I'm reluctant to make those become legal nonconforming.
Well, there's language about what happens when it, I feel like we've read that, too, in here. That batch is that there's language about what happens to one of those uses that's on the, in the commercial core that is not what we're seeking, but still exists, and then it changes when the ownership changes or the use changes.
Yeah, but I actually think, like, for example, the, maybe the best, okay, two of those, three of those museums are like tied to a historic site. So like, I would be, even though I've never gone to the jail museum and I never, maybe, one, one day maybe I will, but it would not work elsewhere, right? Like, it is, it is site specific. And so is like the rail yard museum, railroad museum, and so is, I think the visitor center is quite site specific, I would argue as well. So maybe it's a question for the planning staff, like, I agree, we don't want more of those. I wouldn't want like a new museum or a new library, but like, how do we square this challenge?
So it would become legal nonconforming essentially if it's on the ground floor and it's within the downtown core. So it's allowed to continue, but a new use like that wouldn't be allowed to be established.
And then, and for a legal nonconforming business, what can they do in terms of improving their business? They cannot expand it on a square footage scale. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's kind of limited to repairs and maintenance.
So they can maintain and repair, okay. Could they, the jail museum did like a nice little garden in the back, could they, if that hadn't been done, but they wanted to do that as a legal nonconforming business?
I don't actually think we approved it as a museum because it's been there for so long. So I, I think it's more of a historical site than anything.
Yeah.
So I don't foresee any issues with that. I mean, we, in the time that I've been at the town, we've allowed them to do like the granite arch, and they've done work out back, so there's no, there's no issue for them. They wouldn't have sort of a legal nonconforming issue. And then the railroad museum, which is in the caboose, was allowed by the town. So I don't really see a lot of opportunity for it to expand in its current configuration because it's in a caboose, so.
And then there's the, I think it's called the Truckee Museum, it's on the other end of the, isn't there, it's just like a little room, basically?
It's a continuation of what they have, yeah.
And then what about the welcome center? Is that maybe a different use here?
I think that's visitor center.
Ah, great.
Yeah, and that's allowed.
And that's allowed?
Yeah.
Great. I just was really worried about that. Okay.
Okay, that was the, that was the Pandora's Box of museum talk here. I'd like to go to, so coming back to the question from before, I'm now on in section 1814, table 210, page roman numeral two dash 49. Table 210, agricultural resource and open space uses, once again, why, I, I think those should be allowed in neighborhood mixed use areas and, or NMUC and NMUR. Because why wouldn't we allow a trail if the trail was an appropriate, well, I think a trail is an appropriate thing in a mixed use area. But if there's a reason those weren't included, I would like to hear it.
I don't remember. It's been a year since we did the NMU zones, so I'd have to circle back with the staff that we brainstormed to figure out why we did or didn't include certain things.
I think we all looked at that at that time, or many of us did, some of us did, we looked at that, and I don't know why we would have said no. I wouldn't have, I wouldn't have had a specific reason no, and it seems to me that allows possibly for some creativities in a, in a mixed use zone.
I do know that we did a lot of comparisons to the neighborhood commercial zoning for the NMU zones, so it's possible I'd have to look and see if that's something that's allowed there. That could have been why we didn't propose it. We could put it on a list of things to look at with a future update, since it wasn't part of this round of updates. And I think, are we just interested in trails, not nature reserves?
It's mostly trails, and I mean, unless you were going to, you know, call a small retention pond a, a nature reserve for whatever frogs live there when it rains, probably trails, I would just go with trails.
And I'm guessing it was because also potentially the NMU zone is supposed to be commercial, and maybe that wasn't felt to be, it's more of a recreation use. But we can have some additional conversations about that.
Your recommendation.
Okay.
Forward, is that what anybody's next thing? Okay, now we're in section, chapter 1816, Special Purpose Zoning Districts, Roman numeral two dash 62, top of the page. So we're talking about Public Facilities District, and I know we have new Public Facilities District, that should be, could we get that up here? Really, I guess my only question is, why did we add this sentence in here? Because are there any Public Facilities District designations that overlap with the downtown core?
Yeah, I think there was.
Okay. If there is, then that explains it.
Yeah, yeah, there are some properties downtown.
That is, that answers my question on that. Moving along, we're now at, I'm like at 268. Anybody have something earlier than that? Any specific things? Yeah, now I'm on roman numeral three dash 212. I'm sorry, but this is not underlined as an insert or struck and as a deletion, but I was reading this paragraph. Parking exemptions. We're in excess, we're in ADU. ADU parking exemptions, 18 dot 58 dot 25, section E. When, you can have a parking exemption when on-street parking permits are required but not offered. Seems if they're required but not offered, you ought to have to put in parking. Am I reading that incorrectly?
What page are you wanting to get?
Yeah, roman numeral three dash 212.
PDF page sixty... Seven, you have a PDF.
If you're just in the.
Okay.
Page three dash two and two of the code.
Yes.
So I don't, I don't know, that's existing language. It may be something that came out of the state legislation, because a lot of this did.
Okay, well, 3C looks very odd to me.
Yeah, I mean, we can ask our ADU planner.
Please. I don't need to discuss that further. I'll get this written down here. If I have a request for new language, I have a request for a little rewording on some new language here. Now I'm on page roman numeral three dash two seven five. I believe that if we're inserting new language, we ought to try to make it as clear and nice as possible.
Which page number in the code?
Roman numeral three dash two seven five. We're going to insert something, let's do it with the right punctuation and grammar and parallel construction. So I would just like to see item under five C on that page. Supportive housing projects, paragraph. Items two and three are complete sentences. Could we please make item one a complete sentence? There's no reason to put in sloppy language. I know that makes me sound picky.
You're saying the example one needs to be reworded?
The one that says the examples, number one. If a supportive housing project within a single-family residential project is subject to the same requirements as a standard single-family residence. Not a complete sentence. The next two are.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, what's the second clause, then? Right, because each one, the other, number two and number three, each have a, if this, then development standards or is not permitted. So if a supported housing project within a, is, it's subject to the same.
You could say if a supportive housing project is within a single-family residential project, the same requirements, blah, 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 apply.
Then it is subject to the, okay.
Yeah, I think maybe that's just missing a word there.
It's missing a then.
Yeah.
Then it is subject to.
Okay, yeah, we can reword that.
Okay, in the definitions section, we're in letter H.
I have one before that.
Okay, go for it.
It's PDF page 84, it's seven dash 49, code 18 dot 216 dot 060. I just want to, I think I get this, but I just want to confirm. This is bonuses, incentives, and concessions for projects that are building or workforce housing, so not doing the, the fee incentive, sorry, not doing the fee equivalent. We're taking out a sentence that said, that basically said like your FAR, you get like kind of an FAR bonus by not having to count the residential component of your project. And I, my understanding, Laura, is that that clause, the position of staff is that clause was sort of wrong, it should never have been there. Is that right?
It's inconsistent with the new general plan.
It's inconsistent with the general plan. Got it. Okay, so we're removing that incentive.
We're just removing the language about residential not counting towards the FAR.
Right, but that's.
The rest of it would remain.
So they get an FAR bump, point oh five, but in the old world, they also kind of had a secondary benefit of not having to count the residential.
Residential didn't count under the old general plan, but it does now.
I guess, I guess, I, I guess it's probably outside the scope of the scenario, but it would make sense to me to like increase the point oh five FAR bonus to like point one or something, but I don't know if this is actually like impacting projects on, in the real world or not.
Yeah, and I know that, that's something that's going to be talked about with the incentive, the town incentive program that's going to be coming to you for review in a month or two. So potentially that's something that they would want to provide more benefits to if someone's using the town program versus just a standard allowance in the development code to sort of encourage people to use it.
Will that program apply to like a project, like, I'm thinking of like a really tiny commercial project.
I think that's the idea, that unlike the state density bonus, which has to be five or more units, it would have options for smaller projects, from what I've heard so far.
Okay, all right.
You'll see that next month.
Or December, you need to send, maybe. She's, she's shooting for November, but it, we don't want to promise, because.
Yeah, fair enough. Okay.
There's a lot to do still. That's what she told me today.
Other things, moving in the.
Nothing told definitions, yeah.
Okay, we've added brewery into the thing here, and then on the next page, but roman numeral eight dash 29.
I have, I have a comment before that.
Okay.
This is roman numeral. This is Roman numeral three dash two twenty-eight, which I think is page seventy-three of the Side note, probably if you're doing some editing, specify no roosters. No, seriously, have you ever been in the Philippines? It is, the cacophony is unbelievable because everyone has roosters.
I think we have language about that.
Okay.
Maybe in the definitions.
It is, so the definition is backyard chicken. It says a domestic chick or hen kept on a residential lot as a household pet does not include roosters. Because we had a really lengthy public process of whether we wanted to include backyard chickens as an allowed use in the development code. And prior to what we have currently, you used to have to get a permit so that we could verify that you did not have any roosters. And then we decided after a year, there wasn't a need to get a permit anymore, so now you don't need one.
There are, where I used to live.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Yes. This is a specific comment on some text, but it's also a general comment about the code. Page Roman numeral eight dash twenty-nine. Someone can translate that into PDF for me there?
Page eighty-eight on the PDF.
Thank you. Under the H definitions, we have health and fitness facilities. This description says it, the additional text says, may include individual and group instruction for personal training, fitness, and yoga classes, et cetera. There are, I think my search results indicated one hundred and forty instances of the use of et cetera in the code. I personally don't think that's a good idea because I think it's vague legally. So I would suggest here that instead of this, we could say, and similar instruction, instead of et cetera, or, and similar, period.
I mean, I think we would want to talk to Andy sort of about the use of that and the legal ramifications of changing it because there is a lot of discretion afforded to the director in determining what's an equivalent use in that word, et cetera, does allow for the director to have more discretion.
Could see that.
Is there like a decibel rating? Because some yoga classes tend to be quiet. I'm not characterizing all yoga instruction as quiet necessarily, but then there are some uses, like if you've ever been near Live Fitness during a class, it's quite loud. And so, and that's fine, but it's, that may be where you're, where you can set a boundary is decibel level by use case. What is, what is that called, the definition, like a mixed use versus, anyway?
By zoning district?
Thank you. Zoning district, that might help.
Yeah, there are noise standards that exist. I don't know if we need to define it here.
Just maybe a reference.
Perhaps we could refer to that.
Would you have, so you mean like a second definition for like a louder version of a fitness studio?
Rock and roll yoga.
Yeah.
Be permitted.
I mean, generally, we've never had complaints, to my recollection, of any sort of fitness use. And we don't currently have indoor racquetball or other things that are allowed, although I know there's a lot of community interest for indoor pickleball, which is a louder indoor use, but generally not an impact to outside of the building walls.
And to be fair to live, I once went there to drop something off and everyone, I didn't real, it was so quiet, everyone was like sleeping on the floor and I didn't even notice.
It was the all Shavasana class. Okay, so as far as et cetera goes, I would just ask that we take a look at whether that, where, where it's appropriate in the code and not leave things open to undesirable interpretation. If it's flexibility for the director, that's a different thing.
Well, I mean, here's the thing, is everything that the director does is appealable to. So if I make a determination of a use being consistent or inconsistent, whoever's asked the question can appeal my decision to you as the planning commission and you can review that and make a different decision or support it or however you want to act.
Fair enough. My next request is on page, Roman numeral, it's the next page in the PDF.
I have one on the eight dash twenty-nine, same page. There's just an extra like.
Number sign?
Pound sign, yeah, in hotel motel definition, new language.
The funny thing is that in, in old-fashioned editing marks, you would put insert and you'd use a pound to say, put a space here. That was kind of funny. Okay, very next page, net acre. Net acre is exclusive of vehicular access easements that limit the use of the lot. Please, unless we're just noting that the easements incidentally limit the use of the lot, it should be that and not there. Any objections?
No one's going to comment on the miniature pig?
The miniature pig?
That came up as part of our backyard chicken discussion. So that was also under our one-year trial and we didn't get any complaints and we didn't get any requests to have them, but it is allowed.
Okay, so on page eight dash sixty-seven, just a couple pages later, under studios, bottom of page, Roman numeral eight dash sixty-seven, studios for art, dance, music, photography, et cetera. So it says a very specific list here. We offer a list in the definition, but we don't say et cetera in the definition. And do we need to if we want to broaden that? Because otherwise, this definition says that, to me, it says that is what studios includes and nothing else.
I would say we've often made similar use determinations for this. We wanted to add specifically yoga and fitness because that's one that we commonly get requests for as a studio that we felt like adding that in. It is a very specific list, though, so if you think there needs to be some additional language to provide more discretion, that's how it's typically worked, though.
Well, if you would like it to be an et cetera type list, then I would add the word and similar at the end.
Okay, you can do that.
What's the difference between studios, as in yoga studios and fitness classes, and the definition we just discussed of health?
Facilities.
So this would be a standalone facility as opposed to being part of a larger health and fitness, like a gym.
Okay, a gym would be health facilities that has fitness classes.
Right. Versus a standalone yoga studio or something.
And I have not even, do, are they, are they generally permitted in the same or mostly the same zones? Do we allow studios in like, considered lower intensity?
Yeah, I think studios are allowed in more zones because they are smaller.
This comment was on one of the maps. Is there any other, are there any other comments on the text preceding the maps? Going on to the map of the big parcel, changing to medium density residential, the one at Donner Pass and Northwoods, northwest corner.
Can we pull these up on the big screen? I think it'll be easier.
Yeah, thank you.
It's this one?
Yeah, so I went out there and it doesn't look like there's anything there now. I didn't see any reason we couldn't do medium density residential there. In fact, I was going to comment that I thought it seemed like a great place for that. And I know we looked at this in the general plan, but I thought it's worth asking. We are right next to a single-family dwelling area and then a couple of businesses. It seemed appropriate to me, but were there, anybody think anything of this?
And this is just to make it consistent with the general plan designation, which is medium density.
So we wouldn't, it's not like we would change any of these designations because it would require an amendment to the general.
Correct.
Okay. And all I want to say about that one is yahoo.
I just had a quick question about railroad transit.
Rail transit corridor?
Yeah, is that a new definition or the one we already had?
It's in the, yeah, that was a change in the general plan.
Yeah, and then the zoning category is a new zoning category or?
Yeah, we did that in the last round of updates.
Oh, okay, got it. And then we're just.
And then I think there was some language I forgot to add that I included in this one that we missed the first time around.
And it's just the land that UP owns outright?
Correct.
Great.
Is, is my understanding is really to just give them flexibility to run a train?
Right.
And do train stuff in the land that's right there instead of worrying about, oh my gosh, there's something ten feet from the train track, but it doesn't fit into your.
Did we allow parking lots as a use in that, that zone? Because I know there's been, I think there is a small bit of UP land that we have a, essentially a lease on, right?
Right, on West River.
After much work.
So the rail transportation corridor, I think those are all just railroad serving uses or what they're allowed to do without any permits from the town?
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, at the end of the day, Union Pacific decides what they do with their property and they're not subject to our regulations. So if they decide they want to give us a lease for parking, that's up to them. So we don't, I mean, we try and have a public process, oftentimes because it involves streetscape and we want the community to be involved, but we're still heavily bound by what Union Pacific will allow us to do.
So this zoning will not prohibit the town from using future potential UP land for like a downtown parking lot, if that, they ever got nicer?
Yeah, functionally, nothing's changing.
Yeah, we have a kind of a list of recommendations and ideas, but I would like to check in, and so I'd like to come back to those, but I'd like to check in with our members of the public that are here and just briefly, if I'm allowed to, open for public comment if there is.
You'd like to reopen it for public comment?
I would like to reopen it for public comment.
I believe that's your discretion.
If there is one. Please come up to the podium, state your name. When you're done, you have three minutes and when you're done, please give a comment card to Kaylee. Thanks.
Sarah, is the green light on?
The green light's on. Yes, it is. Am I too far? Is it better? Cyril Manco, I was just listening to your discussion, really something that doesn't concern me, but I think you were talking about studios. And in my experience, it's kind of a, we've given a broad definition. Laura knows about this, so does Danielle and Jenna, because sometimes studios get interpreted like, well, I think the original specific studio uses were like a music studio or art studio or something like that, but then it's been spread over to things like exercise studios, yoga studios, Pilates studios, and, and on and on and on. I don't know if it wouldn't be kind of an interesting idea to put like a cap on the size of the establishment that would determine what a studio could use for. Because having the language like et cetera is kind of an open-ended thing. I think you pointed that out. And yeah, I, how do you really determine, can we think of every kind of studio you possibly have? Crossfit studio? So should a crossfit studio not be like a gym because sometimes it's much larger than like an art studio or a yoga studio? So, and I think it's been interpreted that way and it, I've always seen it as a bit of a loophole. So just thought I'd point out that maybe some restriction on the size of the, of the unit where they're, having their use would be some appropriate way to put a definition to it.
Thank you, Cyril. So I'm putting that back on our. Were there any other things we wanted to add to our list? We have, I think that we can go through this pretty quickly, but I just wanted to kind of get down what we were talking about as recommendations for staff and for any changes we had. The things on my list, we might need to go back to this, theater and event centers in the BI zone, on whether or not we allow commercial parking and vehicle storage in BI, adding brewery to manufacturing with a use permit, doing a reword on downtown row versus commercial core. We would like to recommend that the staff start thinking about where we, where we want to tuck adult industries if that question comes up, adult businesses or whatever the wordage, verbiage is. We'd recommend that allow, trails be allowed in the NMU. I don't think I understand my note on the next.
I think we were not recommending adding theaters. We, I think I heard three to one.
Did we come around to not?
To no, to no on that, so you can strike that.
Okay, we'll scratch that one out. They were going to fix that parallel construction. We have covered the roosters under chickens. I'd recommend that the staff please consult with Andy about the use of et cetera in the code. It's a request. And then we want to talk a little bit about the spread and the definition of studios and how that play out and whether we're concerned about it or any of its current allowed locations.
The only one to add was consider adding breweries to general commercial and service commercial.
As well as manufacturing.
Yeah, as a use permit as well as manufacturing, which it already is in the draft under.
And I think I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that, where you guys, Sammy and. Adding breweries to manufacturing, general, commercial, and service commercial.
And I think it's already in manufacturing.
Manufacturing, okay.
It's, I think.
As a use permit.
Yeah, we'd be changing it to a use permit, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, we're all on, on board with that one. We've heard a public comment that the definition of studios has spread a little bit. Is there a need or should we recommend an exploration of capping the size of studios? Since the studio has come up several times in the amendments that we're looking at. Is there a place? Is that actually covered by the maximum size of a building you can put in any of these
The funny thing is they're allowed in all the same commercial zones, except studios are allowed in manufacturing, which is not what I would have guessed. Am I reading that right?
Maybe that's because, well.
Large-scale art or something.
Oh, yeah, art, yes, the many types of studios, right. So I kind of think because they're allowed in almost all the same ones, it's almost like a moot matter. Anyway, I think we would, I think just to be respectful to the public on the Brown Act, like if we're going to debate that one, I think we'd want to.
Back to us. So, thank you for that reminder. Did we get a decent list of what our recommendations are? Do we need to repeat those? Did someone write them down? Do we need to see those before we move on them?
Well, I was making the edits as we were going along.
Okay.
In the text, so I have them all.
Okay.
Captured, I think.
And you're always being recorded.
If there would be a motion, it would be to, if someone could make a motion, they could make it to say to include the modifications that we've discussed have been recorded during this meeting.
Yeah, and then I think you would just want to circle back on a couple of those questions that you just mentioned. Sounds like studios would be something potentially to discuss down the road. Adult industries also isn't in the current round, but we can make a note that you had interest in relooking at that in the future. And then the commercial parking question, I don't know if we had consensus on that.
I don't think we did.
Vote on that one?
Yeah, we did.
I heard three to one.
They were turning it out. Unless you, unless you had time to ruminate, would like to do another mini vote?
I don't care to do another mini vote.
Okay, so we'll take that one off. So that leaves the brewery, the commercial row, core revised language, trails and NMU, and then all of the text edits that we went through page by page.
Oh, there's lots more. Easy things to, easy things to miss. Is there someone who would care to move that we accept the development code amendments as proposed with the modifications we've discussed in this meeting?
Can you bring up the motion slide? Thanks.
I move that we adopt resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirteen, taking the following actions. Recommending approval to the town council of the following actions. One, twenty twenty-five development code amendments for the business innovation zoning district, highway commercial zoning district and general plan cleanup amendments. Two, zoning map amendments. And three, general plan cleanup amendments. And four, development code cleanup amendments, including the modifications and recommendations we've discussed tonight. And two, recommending the amendments to be exempt from sequel pursuant to section one five zero six one B three of the sequel guidelines and section one five zero six zero C two and one five zero six zero C three of title twenty-four of the California Code of Regulation.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Chair Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Vice Chair Taylor?
Yes.
Commissioner Tuft?
Yes.
Commissioner Kaufman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Are there any staff reports?
Just very quickly, for your next meeting agenda, I think we will have homegrown housing back in front of you. That's the work that Yumi's been doing on what we used to call the Town of Truckee Density Bonus Program. We've got some code amendments for your consideration. And again, I think that'll be next month, but it may get pushed if she needs a little bit more time. And then I also think that we will see the Van Gorder residence back in front of you. That was the one historic design review project. We've been struggling to kind of get it on an agenda that works for both the commission and the applicant. So we think we'll be placing that on the November agenda. So, and we'll certainly know once we've got that all finalized, we'll let you guys know.
Is there any possibility that you would be requesting a second meeting this month and would you like to get our availability for that now if so?
For an October agenda? I don't think we could meet the noticing requirements for.
Not soon enough.
Yeah, we've only got ten, eleven, or ten days left in the month, so yeah, we wouldn't be able to notice it.
Looking forward, any idea whether there might be one requested in November, either at the beginning or end of the month?
I don't think we have any other projects that are ready to go. Though, I mean, we had a continuance on a housing project tonight. We could circle back with those guys and see if they think they might be ready in a couple of weeks. I didn't get that impression, but we can certainly check. And, and that would be a, a project worthy of scheduling a second hearing because it is housing, but we can let you know.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? For the homegrown housing, is that the kind of one thing, it'll come here, do we do two meetings on it or one and send it back to council?
It depends on how quickly or not quickly you can get through those proposed amendments. If you need more than one meeting, you certainly have that discretion. If you feel comfortable with what's been packaged and you, you know, don't want to see it again and want to send it to the council, you can do that too. But I, we're certainly not going to pressure the commission to get through it if you need more time.
Okay. And that's Yumi on that one, right?
Yes, yeah, Yumi will be taking the lead on that.
Any other informational items? Any commission member, member reports? Buddy rent a bike or go to the jail museum?
I have something that I thought the California access sites development that's been happening, that was the former Caltrans base. Really excited to see that go vertical and really excited that they're using modular construction. I was working on another project not here that was using modular construction. And it's a fun, interesting way to limit waste and also hopefully reduce costs, TBD on that one, but excited to see that we have one in town.
All right, if there's no other commission business or the staff doesn't need to tell us anything else, I'm going to adjourn this meeting. Thank you all very much.